I call to order the study session of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. I am going to write on in on our study session business to my call on Ryan Windish.
Thank you.
For the battery energy storage systems.
Thank you, Mayor Hayden, City Council. I'm Ryan Windish, the Community and Economic Development Director. And tonight, we're going to talk, the first topic is battery energy storage systems two point O. And we have some guests here from our, our partnership in this in terms of folks that are going to be presenting tonight. Shonda Walker, our Associate Planner. And then Christine Non, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager with P S E. And she also has somebody attending on the screen from P S E, Chris Green. He's the P S E Safety Consultant. And then also have representation here from East Pierce Fire and Rescue. Bill Samblian, Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal. And so look forward to a good discussion. It's really informational discussion and. The Chris Shonda, take it from here.
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Thank you. We're gonna discuss pretty much the next phase of battery energy storage systems. This is a huge topic, so I encourage you to ask questions anytime. And staff will take all of your questions and comments into consideration as we continue to address this land use. At the request of Council, we're here to provide the study session with information on battery energy storage systems. Placed it on the screen here is the purpose of tonight's study session, to hear more about why we're seeing this emerging trend. A little bit more information on the fire safety about this new technology. And where we will likely see them and how we plan to address safety. So, reading the screen, P S E will be presenting information on the clean energy transformation in the region. Staff will provide an overview of the updated fire codes and the plan review required for these systems. We'll briefly touch on emergency management planning. And we will hear from East Pierce Fire and Rescue about safety operations and the fire risk and response. And as I mentioned, we will be learning about some next steps needed to address different use cases of battery energy storage systems. So, we're calling this B E S S two point O, since we're starting with the new study session this year here. In November of last year, Council did approve that ordinance, two eight nine nine, that addresses large-scale systems. And the timeline here suggests we'd hope to bring a discussion to the Planning Commission sometime in May. And if a new ordinance is warranted, you know, we post a, hold a public hearing for that. So that's just a quick process stand snapshot. The next slide here introduces all the different types of use cases that we're taking a look at. And as I mentioned, ordinance two eight nine nine is our large-scale battery energy storage system facilities that we took a look at. Again, that definition, we provided a megawatt threshold for those large-scale systems. We looked closely at performance standards that need to be applicable to those sorts of facilities. And we ensured we wanted to keep them in our industrial zones as a conditional allowed use. So that's what we've addressed so far. The pictures you see are just examples of other large-scale battery energy storage system facilities. So, just to give you an idea of just the outcome of what a large-scale system would look like. Under this B E S S two point O, we'll be considering mid-scale systems that could be in commercial zones, could retain in industrial zones, and then we'll also briefly touch on residential energy systems. And essentially, we would still need to complete some more research so staff can provide the right recommendation for what is a defined mid-scale system. We'll need to consult other fire reviewers just to ensure where those residential systems fall. They're, they may be outright permitted. There could be a threshold by the I F C that set that we just mirror and just ensure that we have a proper permitting process for them. The next few slides will be P S E's presentation. And I'll hand that over, but so far, do we have any questions from Council?
Any questions so far, guys?
Great. Thanks, Christine.
Hello, Mayor, members of the Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name's Christine Non, and I am the Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager at Puget Sound Energy. And online, we have Chris Green. He was introduced already, but he is one of our safety consultants. He's been working very closely with us on B E S and a lot of our projects. He is also a retired Seattle Fire Captain. So, he brings a lot of expertise to our team, and he is here with us today in case we have any questions. Next slide. So, this is just about, a little bit about Puget Sound Energy. This is our service territory. You'll see a map of all of the counties we have. P S E is Washington State's largest and oldest utility, providing energy services to our local community for over one hundred and fifty years. We are a regulated utility, serving over one hundred, one point five million customers. One point two million are about, one point two million are electric customers, and we have about nine hundred thousand that are gas customers. We serve ten counties across Western Washington, and our core mission is to deliver safe, reliable, and affordable energy to our customers under all conditions. P S E is also at the forefront of the clean energy transition. We are undergoing the most significant transformation in our history as we strive to meet Washington State's clean energy laws. Next slide. So, these are some of the Washington State climate policies that have shaped our work and where we are today. We don't have to go through all of them, but just to note, two of the most, you know, recognized are the Clean Energy Transformation Act, that's C E D A, and then there's also the Climate Commitment Act, which is the C C A. Next slide. So, this is the Clean Energy Transformation Act milestones that we have. We have our own aspirational goals. We have to be coal-free electricity by two thousand and twenty-five. That's sort of where we are right now. And we have to, two thousand and thirty, which is to be carbon-neutral electric. And by two thousand and forty-five, we aspire to be a hundred percent clean electric supply. So, by two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, our resource portfolio no longer includes seven hundred and fifty megawatts of traditional coal-fired baseload generation. Since C E D A passed in two thousand and nineteen, we have signed contracts for over three thousand eight hundred megawatts of C E D A nameplate capacity totaling twenty-eight contracts. Out of those twenty-eight, eleven are new to the region for a total of over two thousand megawatts of capacity. So, the added challenge that we are experiencing now is that energy consumption is growing as transportation industries in our daily lives require more energy. According to current forecasts, energy consumption is likely to increase by a third in twenty years. Electric vehicle charging is forecasted to be twenty-five percent of our total system load in about twenty years. State policy is also requiring that all customers benefit from clean energy transition. So, we're incorporating equity into our planning, designing, and implementation of clean energy programs and resources. Next slide. So, battery energy storage systems, this is where we're at now. Battery energy storage systems are an important part of P S E's plan to provide reliable power our customers expect while delivering more of the clean energy required by Washington's clean energy requirements. B E S allows us to get the most value from existing renewables and offset the need to build additional generation resources that are used only at the times of high demand. We estimate a need of approximately fifteen hundred megawatts of storage by two thousand and thirty. And our efforts include both utility scale and smaller residential or community-sided batteries. So, we are currently exploring a mix of P S E and developer-owned agreements for battery storage projects in our region. Next slide. So, distributed energy resources, this is a new part of our portfolio that we are taking very seriously and looking at. P S E, we have this vision of having energy orchestration, a strategy that centers around empowering customers' choice and flexibility, enhancing controls and automation, and optimizing interactions to achieve in partnership our clean energy targets. D E Rs, this is distributed energy resources, are smaller-scale renewable and generation resources that are on the customer side of the meter. So, this is rooftop, ground-mounted solar batteries, E V, and even smart appliances like your thermostat at home. D E Rs can promote two-way flows of energy and offers opportunities for utilities and customers to work together to meet rising demand. We launched our first community solar site in two thousand and twenty-one. This program has grown to six sites within a ray nearby. We have one in Bonnie Lake. It's generating roughly sixteen megawatts of solar energy. The program has given nearly four thousand customers who otherwise may not have had the ability to go solar have access to renewable energy generated in their own community. Over and then, over the next three years, we expect to at least, to add at least eighteen growing projects to our total capacity to at least fifteen megawatts by, fifty megawatts by two thousand and twenty-five. A large part of what we're looking at too is microgrids. Microgrids are self-sufficient energy systems that serve a small geographic footprint, such as a neighborhood, a college campus, hospital, or even a business center. Localized systems can generate and deliver energy alongside the main grid or independently in an island mode. This is also islanding when disconnected due to an outage. One of the biggest benefits of a microgrid is resiliency, particularly as we experience more extreme weather conditions. We're also committed to ensuring that at least thirty percent of energy benefits from energy efficiency, distributed solar and storage, and demand-response programs benefit underserved communities. Many of our community's solar shares are often income-eligible, so they don't have to pay to be a subscriber to get those benefits. Currently in Sumner, you may know that we are discussing with Prologis and potential developers on rooftop solar installations. And this came out of our public R F P, which we issued over a year ago to spur more solar and storage growth. P S E and Prologis are still in negotiations and studying these potential sites, so no specific details can be shared. But we are also not, we're not fully moving through with a project with them yet, but it is in discussion. Next slide. So, this is some of our battery demonstration projects that we already have. On the left side, so we have, in two thousand and three, we partnered with the small community Samish Island in Skagit County to test out a new microgrid comprised of fifty kilowatts, which is three hundred and thirty-two kilowatt-hours of battery, and an eight-kilowatt-ground-mounted solar array that will provide backup power to the local fire station in nearby homes in the event of an outage. So, this is, this is a islanding, what we've done. We have this very small project. And you can see that the battery is very small, and we've added art to it, so it doesn't necessarily look like a battery. On the right side, this is our Glacier Battery Storage Project. In late two thousand and fifteen, P S E installed a two-megawatt lithium-ion battery system adjacent to the existing substation in Wacom County, town of Glacier. This project is funded in part by grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce, in addition to an investment by P S E. So, the Glacier project is designed to perform three primary functions. This is to serve as a temporary backup power source to island a portion of Glacier during outages, reduce system load during periods of high demand, balance energy supply and demand, and help to support greater integration. We also are partnering, this is another project that we're doing to see if it works, is that we're partnering with the city of Tonino and their school district on a microgrid project that would enable the community to use the school as an emergency shelter in response of a severe weather or natural disaster. Those are some of the projects we have going on now. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, one.
Go ahead.
It was considered midsize then compared to the large scale.
What was that?
Mid-size distribution compared to the large scale, or like the Connex size box? Because these are a lot smaller, it looks like.
Chris, do you know the, how to, where kind of that definition comes in of what size?
That's different everywhere. The biggest delineation you're gonna make is at six hundred thousand watts. That's when you become more utility scale. That's where eight fifty-five pulls some of that language from, but as far as this mid-size, long-duration energy storage really depends on where you're at in the country.
Sorry, Chris, we can't hear you right now. I don't know. We might need to check our audio.
Mine looks like it's coming through. I can hear you just fine.
We can't hear him. So, the larger, we, so our larger, what we've seen is like the hundred megawatts, I mean, those are larger. This would be like, because it's technically a microgrid, this would be like mid-size. The smaller-sized ones are very much like residential, like what you would put in your home, like a backup.
The one we're looking at on East Valley down there is.
That's utility. That's a utility scale. It's two hundred megawatts.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. So, can you give me an example of what a developer-owned storage system looks like? What would that be?
So, we, we have some different programs. So, we could have a developer, developer come in and have their own battery. We, we may have this program called like Bring Your Own Battery that we're looking into, where they have purchased our own battery and they'd like to, they'd like to use it, and then we can tap in and you, you know, their project, their sort of project would work alongside our overall grid. And then we also have, like, we could buy the battery and use their parking lot or facility or wherever they're zoned, and they could have it. But this is likely to be like a warehouse or business prologist. That would be sort of like a develop, they, they could be. They could have worked with the developer to get the battery, or we could be working with the developer to get a battery.
And so then, how is it charged? Is it solar?
Yes, if they, that's mostly what we're looking at, is solar and storage. So, they put the solar on top of their, their building, and then they have the battery to, you know, store it and then release it back onto the grid when, when needed.
Okay, and then my next question is, are there model sites around the country that P S E is looking at to replicate here in this state? Or is this, we're gonna try the grid here, we're gonna try the Samish thing there? I mean, you know, just getting the variety out there. Is that, is that the plan?
I mean, I think that's just a little bit hard to answer. I don't know the answer, but I know that we are looking at all different types of technology everywhere and learning from them all. And then we are, you know, developing our own projects to see if they work in our own backyard. But it's, it's sort of hard to pinpoint. There isn't one that we're like modeling after, but we are working with developers that have batteries in other locations that have been successful, so.
Does P S E have a strategic plan, a project plan, on how you're gonna develop it in this state? Maybe that's a different way to ask that question.
Yeah, the, you know, we are, we're doing everything we can to bring as much as we can online to meet those megawatt targets that we need. There isn't really a, the specific plan is if anybody has the available land and want to partner with us, we want to be that partner. We just want to be that partner of choice. But that's really, we are, we have, we have to meet targets for the state and for ourselves, and our strategy is really whoever wants to be our partner, we are willing to work with them, and we want to make something happen for your community.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Andy?
Hi, thank you. A couple of questions. So, what, you mentioned the lithium-ion batteries, and you mentioned solar panels. What are some of the other, is there other types of batteries or other types of energy storage that you're talking about?
Right now, I think they're all lithium-ion. I think in the future, I know, Chris, I don't know if your audio is working. We talked a little bit about this is, in the future, it is looking like that battery chemistry may change, and I can't remember, Chris, what you said that we, we were seeing. But there is, there are different types of batteries that are gonna be coming online, not the, just the traditional lithium-ion. Chris, I don't know if you're, is your, oh, no.
Is it us? Yeah, the way that this meeting's set up. I don't think I messed things up.
Councilmember Tanner.
Oh, and one, one.
Oh, you.
One more. Oh, wait. So, you can answer. Okay, so then, second question was, this is, it looks like a pretty ambitious timeframe. Can you explain a little bit how the funding works? Is this, it seems to me like people are feeling tight. Like, a lot of the climate things that I'm seeing, they're causing a lot of costs for people. How is this gonna affect, like, who pays for it? Is this federally, state? Is P S E paying for it? Can you explain how that's split up? I know it's probably some of all of those, but can you help us understand, like, how much this is gonna cost you? How much is it gonna cost customers? Like, what is this, what is the fiscal impact of this, of these targets?
I think I will have to get back to you on like the actual fiscal impact. I know we are collectively all working together. I mean, we're working closely with state and with the federal governments as well to ensure that we have, you know, the opportunities. But as far as how the finances work out, I, I don't know the answer to that question. But we can get back to you, Councilmember.
That's, oh, that's one question you can answer, I think, since I'm striking out here. Can you tell me, so you mentioned a couple of different sizes. One of them, I think you mentioned that one in Glacier was maybe two megawatts, I believe?
Yeah.
Can you help me understand what that means? Like, how many, what is the average house to use? Like, what does that mean as far as, like, megawatts don't mean much to me as far as how much that?
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I'm not an expert when it comes to the megawatt size calculation either. But this is a very small community. They're like a remote community. This is just like a test site, and we have partnered with the fire station down there, the fire department down there, so that, you know, they're, they're close to that safety resource. But as far as how much that powers, all I know is that this is a very small community. But I can get back to you on that too. I am not the megawatt expert, or I don't know those calculations.
Looks like I got some chat responses for you, Councilmember Elpers. Looks like thirty kilowatts are used to run a home on average per day, thirty kilowatts. We've got some different battery chemistries that the lithium-ion continues to lead. However, there's vanadien flow batteries, which I know I did a little bit of research on that, are, are becoming more frequently used, and sodium-ion batteries as well. So.
Okay, and are you done, Andy? Okay, Councilmember Tanner.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Christie, we're really peppering you with questions here today.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, and so, did I hear you say earlier, typically, we're seeing this as a solar energy that's then being used for these B E S S?
We, we, I mean, the most you can get out of, you know, with, with batteries, we like to have solar, so you have that solar, you're, you're getting that energy, and you're also storing it. With our community solar site, that's just solar. So, we're getting that energy, and we're distributing it among the neighborhood. So, that is, you know, an example of what just a solar site is. And then we also can have just storage, so if we, we can have, you know, a battery. Solar and storage is more likely what we'd like to see, but we can also just have storage too. So, just to consume some energy, store some energy. So, we could do either or, but we are hoping to explore more solar and storage, so we get those, both those benefits.
Gotcha. Yeah, last question I had for you, just on the lithium-ion aspect of that. Is there, I feel like I hear occasionally about the difficulty resourcing a lot of these types of raw materials around the world, and I don't know if lithium is one of those materials that is more difficult. I don't know if you have any information about the expectancy, you know, that we have to be able to get those raw materials for, you know, relying on it if B E S S became more used across the country.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. Chris is providing some really good responses for us. I'll go ahead and read her in, in response to the different battery types. He did provide that there's a new application or use of sodium ion, which has a less of an impact on the environment, so as opposed to the lithium ion. Decentralizing the traditional energy grid will need a number of passive energy generation and containment systems. So, there's a couple of different options here we're looking at for energy generation in combination with energy storage. And then he follows up with saying, to your point, Councilmember, can a sodium-ion chemistries would be a better solution to avoid that impact?
Gotcha. Go ahead.
Councilmember Clarkett.
So, as the city writes up these ordinances, how are we gonna be able to tell what's a good battery from an unacceptable battery and system? Is that gonna come from P S E? Are we gonna have to invent the wheel ourselves?
We won't be inventing the wheel, and I will certainly go over our fire plans reviews component over that specific review. But it is helpful to continue to consult our experts in the field about what is gonna be the better alternative battery chemistry to utilize, so we can make a choice on which batteries we'd like to have in, in Sumner.
Thank you.
And our, in our ideal scenario is we would love, if, if we want to partner with the city, we want to work with cities that are, you know, if they're getting ideas to do a project like the Samish Island one or something similar, we just, if you would love to include us and let us know about it, we want to work with you all and develop that partnership so that we can make sure that we bring good projects to your community.
Anybody else? Okay.
Hey, I think one thing I'm curious about, so that you mentioned the C E D A, and that is, that is specifically for utility companies, or is that, how does, who does that pertain to?
C E D A is really, I mean, it's a state clean energy policy. Where we play into it is that we, we are removing coal. It's not specific to the utility. I mean, it's the state's policy, but for us, we are removing coal from our system this year to, you know, pledge that we are making that transition.
Do you know how much energy you're losing from removing coal?
That is seven hundred, about seven hundred and fifty megawatts. We do have to make up for that loss.
Do you know what percentage you are at making up for that coal?
I don't know. I don't know, but I know with our, I mean, we have a lot to make up with, and that's why we are really ramping up our work and trying to bring as much renewable resources as we can. But I don't know the answer to that, but I can get back to you and see if we have that.
Be interested. I've heard, I mean, that's been a question I've been curious about for quite a while, how you're gonna replace this energy that you're getting rid of. Does the natural gas, that, that recent ballot item, does that affect any of this? How does that fit in this C E D A? It sounds like they want to get rid of natural gas, but then that got voted, what is the, how does that relate?
So, I don't, I know that there are some, I don't have any updates on the recent ballot initiative, but that, that, that had more to do with reversing, like, building codes and a planning aspect of the bill. But I have not heard a recent update on it, but we can get back to you on that.
But the two thousand and forty-five milestone would not include natural gas. Is that how I understand it? It says a hundred percent non-emitting electric supply. Is that, or is this not related to gas at all?
No, no, it's not related.
It's not related. There's a separate, okay, sorry.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But we can confirm.
Okay, and then, so the city doesn't have any specific requirements related to C E D A? Or does this, how does that interact with the city? Maybe Ryan knows this. I don't know. Is, is C E D A apply to us? Like, do we have to have a certain number of renewable energy stuff?
I'm not really very well-versed in C E D A, so I couldn't say. I know we have some electric car requirements and that kind of thing, but I don't think that's in C E D A. We're putting solar on the roof of City Hall, but that's outside of C E D A.
Get a B E S S in the town, and we'll have some solar here, so we're getting started. Okay. Thank you. I think that's good.
Councilmember Bowman.
Okay, one, one last thing. Sorry, when you let Andy ask questions, then my brain starts going with it. So, it sounds like you have about twenty years that this has to happen, which is actually not much time at all. And for clarity's sake, it sounds like it's a state mandate. And um, for clarity's sake, it sounds like it's a state mandate. Okay, so it's state mandate, I think that's an important element to understand, so I don't know if the city has to do it, but the state is mandating. Um, and so I would be curious, I would like to think there is a strategic plan somewhere at Puget Sound Energy.
We, we have a.
Curious to see that.
Yeah, we have a lot of really good information that I can make sure we pass on to um, Ryan and Krishonda. Um, it's all on our website, we, we have very wonderful planners that have planned out. Years and years and years ahead, we have, um, you know, we, we have to, we have like an integrated resource plan, we have everything very much. Planned out, we, we have um, what we call like a. Idea where we would like to have future renew- renewables, um, we've done like s- studies and site locations of where we'd. Like to have more generation, um, it doesn't always mean it pans out that way, but we um, know where. We are gonna need to see improvements to our system, we've known this for many, many years, um. But it doesn't mean that uh, it always happens that way, but we do have really good plans, it's, I'll make sure you get all those.
I'm sure you do, and thank you for doing that, it'll just tell us what we have to stand in front of, right, or what's coming at us, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So, if we're gonna have uh, solar panels on our roof at City Hall, who's paying for that? And, you know, is that a program that's being funded outside the city, or is it coming out of the budget?
We received a state grant, actually, to be able to pay for the installation of solar panels. Uh, we put a new roof on City Hall last year, and then, once you do that, it's optimal time to, if you're gonna put solar panels on, it's best to put it on at the beginning of the life. Of the roof, right, so, uh, they're being installed, solar panels are being installed this week.
So that all the costs are covered by that state grant.
That's my understanding of that.
Anybody else? Are we good down here?
Test, 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 test.
If I could jump in just real quick with a little summary.
Yeah.
That's all right. So, you've heard from P S E, we've heard, well, you've heard from us, say, last year, we had, the council adopted. Regulations related to grid scale battery energy storage system, and then. We said we're gonna be coming back, and we're, so we're here, and then what we're doing is kind of looking forward to what is. In in really response to P S E's vision and plan, which really has to do with what is, as as Christine went through it. Uh, dispersed energy type of resources, so. When she talks about Prologis, Prologis is one of the largest property, well, they're the largest industrial property holder in the world. But they also own a lot of the large warehouse buildings up in the North End. So, the idea would be they would have solar panels on those roofs up there, and they'd be storing the energy in battery form. You know, batteries, and then putting that off and on the grid as needed for the, for the market. So that's why we're kind of going two point O, those would be kind of a mid-scale system, and then maybe even, I don't know, it's sizes in terms of. Kilowatts or megawatts, but uh, the idea is that, um, I guess my, what I'm trying to say here is, is we are. Looking at future zoning changes that address these mid-scale and small-scale battery systems. Because part of the vision is a dispersed energy. Source, right, so you could be, uh, you could be a resident, you could be a single-family house with solar, right, and you could be putting. Power off and on the grid, um, so I just wanted to try to paint the picture of kind of what the vision is. And that's what we, as the city here, are kind of responding to in terms of P S E's needs. Uh, I wrote down fifteen hundred megawatts uh, of storage, and how do you get that? So that's, that's what we're.
Anybody else?
So, we, we do have some more slides.
It was a good pause. So, I'll just cover just three safety aspects, um, the next few slides, and. I'll be tagging in our assistant uh, chief and fire marshal, Bill here. Um, when we talk a little bit more about the fire district's role in battery energy storage systems for the large scale that we are allowing in. In Sumner, and just generally what their role is for any of the other systems, when and if they get installed. Um, I'll begin with just covering the fire plans review, where. All battery energy system components must comply with all codes and standards relevant to the operation and installation of energy storage equipment. The city adopted the twenty twenty-one international fire code, which did add a new section twelve point zero seven. Just to address this emerging um, technology, energy storage systems. So I just kind of put categories of just the various standards and requirements, you know, we've got our international fire and building codes. And a series of standards that get triggered depending on your threshold size and electrical codes. And um, U L listed uh, requirements for the, the use of certain battery types. Modules and systems, and that's just to say, they're required to be a third-party inspected and tested. And those standards that are kind of highlighted in red relate to explosion standard requirements and. It kind of just gets into the weeds of all the, the details there, so um, these various fire codes and requirements are certainly covered during city permit review. Um, any additional best projects may play strain on, on our fire plans reviewer and our development service team and. You know, addressing that third-party inspection, whether it be during the permit review of the U L listed. Elements and and technology, or inspections um, uh, prior to opening operations, so just, just things to consider. I hope to not get too many questions about uh, these codes here. Uh, moving on to just uh, generally emergency management planning, um. I placed on this slide here that in the I F C, there is a six hundred kilowatt hour threshold. That any battery energy storage system that exceeds that amount is what would trigger compliance with the hazard mitigation analysis. Um, install fire suppression, um, designs and systems, a- as well as develop an emergency management plan, so that. Is all on the developer, um, contractor to su- to submit. Um, we are aware that it will require mul- multiple agency coordination and multiple department review. And those are just some of the contents there that's listed in the emergency management plan. Um, we do have an emergency management and safety coordinator here for the city of Sumner. I don't think we upgraded him to a panelist. Um, but his name is Evan, and yeah, he works for the city, he's been really great with. Um, just helping me even wrap my mind around battery, battery energy storage systems and just kind of taking a look at. Um, you know, things from, you know, a hazard standpoint and um, evacuation protocols, he'd be really privy to what. What's really required, and I believe during the city permit review timeframe, we would be reviewing these plans and. Requesting modifications and clarifications and before we get a final plan in place. Um, coordination with our fire department will also occur at any large-scale battery energy storage system. You know, finalizing that emergency management plan, but more specifically, the fire district's role will be. Um, site-specific, so I threw up a couple of. Um, topics that Bill can go over as he sees fit, um, generally, uh, if you're curious, maybe he'll. Uh, provide information on fire response to E Vs versus and um, battery energy storage systems. And go over what this fire safety plan would include.
Good evening, council, thanks for having me here. Again, Bill Salin, Assistant Chief of East Pierce Fire. Uh, we've been working with Cassandra and Evan, uh, and the city on, on this project as we go through, this is very emerging and dynamic. Um, processes we've been going through, I've, I've learned tons the last three, three and a half, five to five months of this. Um, as far as site-specific plan reviews, looking at what is being proposed, we're keeping up to date with the latest trends. Um, like Chris was saying earlier, from lithium ion to sodium ion to um, the van- the van- vanity. I can't even say that word, batteries, but um. From our standpoint, not much is going to change as far as a response, we're capable to do that, we have a full commercial response. That's going to be going to this, we're learning as they, from lessons learned, right, as this technology progresses. Um, from defensive fires to protecting the surrounding exposure controls. Um, all of that water consumption, that's why the requirements of, when we did the site, I required two additional hydrants on, on scene. Plus the um, the width of the alleyways for the exposure controls. So, we are, we are working towards that, we do have the capabilities, and we have automatic mutual aid agreements with all of our surrounding jurisdictions and counties. Um, be Auburn, Verfa, Central Pierce, King County, uh, et cetera, so. As we move through this process, if there's any questions, please just let me know, and if I don't have the answers, I will get them for you, but.
Any questions now?
Test, test.
Um, thank you, so, water is what is used to put these fires out?
But not to actually suppress.
Right.
Not to protect exposures and to contain it to the module that's, that's affected by the fire.
So that's why you did the two additional hydrants at that site?
Correct, for water flow purposes.
So then, what is it you fight it with? Foam?
Let it burn out.
So it just has to extinguish itself?
The way these new, from my understanding, and Chris might have a good idea on this as well, but from my understanding, these. These technologies that they're doing, they're individual towers, the modules, the battery systems are individual towers. And those towers are separated by fire separations, uh, which can be isolated to those. So, we would monitor that tower, if you will, that's affected by the thermal runaway or the, or the fire. Um, minimize any exposures to any, any gases that are being off-gassed, and just contain the fire to that module.
How do you minimize the gases, the off-gas, like if it's.
Let it go up, and that's very variable when it depends on the environment.
I was gonna say, what if it goes sideways?
Correct, it's, that's gonna change any given second or day. But I will, what I will say is that we do have access that we use currently on our wildfire um, mitigation plans. Is we can get a, what's called a spot forecast, so we can actually contact Seattle NOAA and give them the coordinates, the latitude longitude, and they'll give us a spot. Forecast the next three, six, twenty-four hours of that site-specific, whi- which will give us fuel modeling, um, wind models. All of that, so we can project plumes.
Do you know when the plume's most toxic? Is it immediately when it starts to burn, or is it the whole time it's burning, or?
Personally, the whole, it's the whole thing, I mean, no one, do it, but I would like it to, a commercial structure fire. Or a house fire that has a whole bunch of chemicals in, in, at least in my house. If you, my, my garage light's on fire, who knows what, what's gonna be off-gassing in there, that bunch of chemicals in there.
Great, alright.
So, and that's, and that's to do with probably a lot of us, right? But, I mean, we're talking hydrogen sulfide, cyanide, um, the fluorides, all the stuff that's off-gases during the. The combustible process, the complete combustion process. The one thing that I would say is that if. While these are burning in the individual modules, it should minimize the smoke as long as it's not in a contained building. Where we've had problems before, where it's in a large contained building where those gases can build up, then you comes into an explosion hazard. These are not like that, these are exterior models that are individual, that are separated by wind.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned with, like, the neighbor, downwind, that's all.
Hundred percent, when I met with Bright Night at the onsite open house that night, so I'm also our emergency management planner, so I work with Evan. Uh, quite a bit, especially with the evacuation model, stuff like that for the cities. But um, so that's why I would bring up the plume modeling for the wind predictions, cause I'd say eighty-five to ninety percent. Don't quote me on those numbers, cause I know this is being recorded, but a, a majority of our winds come out of the southwest. So, going southwest and northeast, well, what's northeast of that specific site is the Lake Rennells development there, right? So from a management, emergency management stampede, or standpoint, that would be my concern, but also if, if it's. We've, we're getting good rise, inversion's not set in, all of those factors that vary, there are variables. Then, that would be my concern. The good thing is, we're gonna have time to evacuate if it gets to a major event at that. So, but with the early, from my understanding and the early stuff that I've seen in the application and. The alarm system detections, the early detection systems that are gonna be recovered on this, we're gonna know well ahead of time before something goes really, really bad.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody down here? I just passed you right on.
So, how um, often do you think that a fire would happen, or a explosion?
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't even guess on that. Uh, I know that there has been around the nation, there has been some incidents, um, one incident I spoke of was. Where some firefighters actually got injured, but that was inside where, before they knew that the explosion of, of gases. Inside of the building. So that, that's a whole other. Set of circumstances. Now, we do see emergency vehicle fires, um, the Teslas that catch on fire, stuff like that, it's the same. Tesla battery pack technologies, but we do mitigate those. It does take quite a bit of more water. To extinguish those and on vehicles, then um. What is gonna be isolated in this, because the battery systems in a, an emergency vehicle is not gonna be isolated, kind of like the module and the towers. In a storage system, so it's a little bit different, but it does take more water, and we have a lot of. And you see them all the time, the, the cyber trucks, the Teslas out on the road, and we get very few. E V fires, as far as vehicle fires, so this is new for us as far as battery storage systems. But there are smaller battery arrays, um, the residential uses and stuff like that, like the, the sixty. The sixty megawatt or fifteen megawatt up in Bonnie Lake, there are smaller cases of this, this is just on bigger scale.
But it's, I mean, it's not gonna, likely to happen very often.
I would hope not.
Yeah.
We've got some uh, comments, again, from uh, the P S E, uh, safety consultant there, it looks like utility scale. Failure rates globally have reduced significantly since twenty eighteen. So he's more or less providing um, agreeance with uh, our assistant fire chief here's comments in regards to. House fires, off-gassing in a more hazardous way, like in a house fire versus a battery energy storage system, so they're. Fire hazard in and of itself is not as scary as it appears, what I'm gathering from these comments here. Um, but yeah.
Test.
It looks like the failure rate's gone down significantly since twenty eighteen.
Go ahead, Andy.
Hey, I was just curious, um, similar question that um, councilor Bowman asked, uh, P S E, just curious what, what other. Parts of the country are you seeing do the battery energy storage, the storage areas, and are you guys? What lessons learned and how are you, what, how are you learning from them, or do you see us as more of a pioneer in that, uh, in this industry?
California, yeah, Chris just said too, California, Arizona, Texas, they're, they're going in everywhere. One of the examples that I was talking to about was um, one incident that was down in Texas, one incident that was down in San Diego recently. Um, where they had a fire that, and they, they got it put out, they had to go back two or three, four times to put it out, but it eventually went out. Um, but that's, as we learn, and I belong to the International Association of Fire Chiefs and Washington State Fire Chiefs, and we. Have a dedicated um, bulletin about lithium ion battery and sodium ion battery fires, and we share information all the time. And lessons learned, and we fire those things out all the time to each other, so we learn from each others across the industry, across the nation. And what, how we do it, and then we update our S O Ps or S O Gs in accordance to, hey. Like the building, the one that was in the building fire, okay, well, if, if we, we come across one, which we don't have one in our jurisdiction that has it right now, but if we came across one that was off-gassing. A thermal runaway within a structure, we're gonna leave it vented, we're, we're not gonna open that building because we know it's gonna be an explosion happen because of what happened down south. So it's that, it's things like that that we're learning from, and we keep, because the technology is changing so fast. We, we, we're trying to keep up with them, and like, we've been partnering with Bright Night, we've been partnering with the city, I've get a lot of. Um, literature from all parties, and that way I get multiple points of view, because my main concern is to keep our citizens safe. And to keep my members safe, like, because they're gonna want to be the ones being, being. And to keep my members safe, because they're gonna want to be the ones being being called to this.
I'll add Chris's last comment to finish this section of our discussion here. Um, he's emphasizing cabinet entry, battery energy storage systems is important for our fire service, so. Not considering inside buildings.
It's not a walk-in unit, it's externally, it's like if you're opening a cabinet, so we're not entering it.
So it's a good terminology, cabinet entry, but.
Thank you, Chris.
Just a summary here, I know, we're almost done, Mary. Just a summary then, just a recap of. Where we need to kinda take a look at things, um. Residential energy storage systems, those are just some examples that you could see installed in residential, those uh two photos on the top. Uh, power walls and um. I believe battery, a battery system, and I put the. Ders, your term there, Christine, for potentially, that's correct, residential has the ability to be a distributed energy resource. But not at this scale.
Uh, yeah, if it's at any customer on the customer side of the meter.
So um, and the lower two photos are just examples of commercial mid-scale. And um, there's still things to kinda look at in terms of a hybrid system. Co-located with energy generation like solar or just serving as backup energy. Um, and or standalone utility, which there were some good terms that PSC kinda provided to help us define our mid-scale uses. Um, just a quick summary then of just next things to consider and next steps. Um, one, one of them again being that dis- distinguishing in our code, um, mid-scale versus large-scale battery energy storage systems. Um, will require us to continue research and on model ordinances and just hold out those discussions primarily with our planning commission. On different use cases, so that's what we'll explore with them. Um, as I mentioned early on, something, some systems might be outright permitted. I know we allow solar installs. So we've got some fire permit applications and associated permit fees to kinda take a look at. Um, Bill didn't mention this, but East Pierce Fire and Rescue has a community notification. Board that lists out hazards, so they're aware of which properties has what hazard there. So we need to take a closer look at that communication style, how we're notifying the fire department on when we approve or permit. Any of these sorts of uses and yeah, we'll take more closer look at those performance standards that are that are needed for any of the zoning changes.
One question that I think it's good for everybody to be here. So I'm just curious, I'm thinking about the fires happening in California. I'm thinking about, so like say we have small scale, energy storage in people's houses. What happens if your neighbor's house catches on fire and they have one of these, it looks like the main way of handling it is just to let it burn, so that's a really. Uh, it seems a little, how does that work? So if the house next door has this catches on fire, does it catch your your battery on fire? How does it start, does it have to start from inside the battery? Like, how does, how does it work in a community of people? I feel like if it's in an industrial zone and it's spread out, that's. Different than having it in a small scale and it seems to me that if it spreads and you can't put it out with a hose, that's a little.
Sure, let me differentiate with this, with the residential, it's, the residentials are small enough that you can. Uh, apply enough water to be able to extinguish that. I'm talking about the big commercial ones that are Conex box size. Then we would protect exposures on those. Residential or battery arrays are not that large. So we will be able to overcome that, those BTUs with the water flow.
Do solar panels have any uh? Chance of catching fire or or you know?
Solar panels themselves, no, it's it's more of the wiring and the degradation of the connections potentially. Uh, your weakest point is always gonna be the transition where the most resistance is within the electric, electric, electrical connectors.
Okay.
So but that's normally where you're gonna get your friction.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know.
Anybody else?
We're done. Thank you.
Thanks for answering those hundreds of questions.
Thank you.
And there, if you could put us into recess state the time and we're gonna try to fix these audio issues before.
Okay. So.
Just say we're gonna be in recess.
We're gonna be in recess for five minutes.
Did you hear about the Frederick Town?
Right now, I know the people in. Chris Green, are you there and can you hear me? Yes, we're just trying to figure some stuff out. Got to come through. Okay, so. Um, I'm still talking right now, uh, yes. Okay, Jeff, I'm gonna, here, hold on. Hit this test speaker option here.
Yeah, I haven't heard that one yet.
I got one from uh your counterpart that went up to Black Diamond and did the thing. Yeah, his name was Julian.
Julian or Rock?
Julian, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I have, I like to send people information as I learn. And I'm excited, he said something about iron air batteries, so I don't know if you guys are still working on this, but the natrium flow battery would be cool too.
Please send me information, thank you.
I apologize, I don't have any.
It's okay, you can email me and we can.
I will, thank you.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, there we go, we gotta work in. That's good news.
Thank you, Patrick.
No problem, I will go now. I have no opinions.
Ready? Are we ready?
We'll upgrade the.
Oh, Lisa Catherine.
You're good, man.
Are we ready? All right, uh, follow us back into order at seven PM.
Mayor is liking to move forward with.
Yes, so we're going to uh ordinance number twenty-nine sixteen, commending Sumner Municipal Code. Twelve point three eight park impact fees.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of the City Council and I'm a community economic development director. And tonight, uh, discussion item on updating the city's park impact fees. Uh, City Council adopted a updated twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty Parks and Trails Plan in May. And it was melded into the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update. And also the capital facilities plan. And the um, the new plan set the groundwork for updating the parks impact fee. And the State Growth Management Act allows impact fees to be changed by a local government on new developed, charged by impact fees. By a local government on new development to recover a portion of the cost of capital facility improvements needed to serve that new development. For example, it's to allow really growth to pay for growth. Yeah, this allows for a transparent and balanced fund system or capital facilities funding responsibilities are shared among all beneficiaries. Residents, business, and developers. Uh, staff has been working with our consultants at Burke, um, putting together and developing a parks impact fee rate study. And tonight we have votes uh from our consulting team here uh to present, uh Catherine Goetz. Uh, Stephanie Heinmark and Lisa Reader. And so I'm gonna turn the entire presentation over to them because they are the experts. And will walk us through the presentation and answer questions. The uh, the intent is to have this in front of council next Monday, next Tuesday, excuse me, the twenty-first for action. So I'll turn it over to uh Burke, I'm not sure who's gonna take the lead.
I'll take the lead, uh, thanks Ryan. Uh, my name's Catherine Getz, I'm with Burke Consulting and. Um, Stephanie's here and Lisa's here as well. They've been working on the comprehensive plan uh update, so you've probably seen them before. Um, but they'll be here to help answer any questions and talk through this work. And uh, we have a brief presentation that Stephanie's going to share for me. Um, about the park impact fees update, so we just have a few slides that we'll go through and um. Happy to answer any questions. So Ryan mentioned this a little bit, but um, the city needed to update its park impact fees. For a few reasons, um. One is that uh trails are now part of the transportation impact fee, so we wanna take them out of this fee calculation. Um, second, there's been some uh changes to state law, so we need to change the methodology a little bit. And uh, third, we have an updated uh park level of service and the new capital facilities plan. Uh, so we wanna base the fees on the current rate of parks investment. So we've worked closely with staff to prepare this rate study for the park impact fees. Um, so what our park impact fees, Ryan mentioned this a little bit as well, but they're fees paid by developers. Of residential, commercial, and industrial property. Uh, the intent is to help offset the impact of new development on the park system. Uh, so Sumner has park impact fees already, they were established in uh twenty eighteen to support implementation. Of the twenty eighteen Parks and Trails Plan. So the update to the park impact fees aligns with the adoption of the new plan that covers um twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty. Uh, so I'll talk a little bit about the methodology for how we come up with the fees. Um, so they're currently set based on a per capita investment. So what we do, we take the value of the current park system divided by the number of beneficiaries. We're trying to show that in this graphic at the bottom. Um, beneficiaries include residents and workers, so to come up with the total number of beneficiaries. We wanna quantify the demand that residents and workers uh put on the system based on the relative access to park facilities. Or how many hours per week the system is available to each group, so we assume that residents. Uh, have more hours available than do workers. So once we have that investment per capita, we convert this to the expected land uses. Through which residents and workers will pay the impact fees. So for residences, this is residential development. And uh, we're using the number of beneficiaries uh per housing unit and the expected growth in housing units. Um, and for employees, this is uh based on the square feet of commercial and industrial development. Um, we then adjust the fee based on uh capital investments funded by other sources. Because impact fees are not intended to pay the full cost of capital improvements. But really the share that is related to new development. So the methodology is really um similar to uh the current methodology for the twenty eighteen, um, the twenty eighteen study. Uh, we did make a few um updates to it, though I didn't wanna talk about a little bit. Um, partly this is due to changes in in state law and recognizing some changes in case law. Um, one is that residential fees will be charged based on the number of bedrooms in a housing unit. Um, so that a housing unit with more bedrooms would pay a higher fee. Uh, there's a recent uh new state requirement to have a proportionally lower impact fee for smaller housing units. So that's how we're recommending we address that. Uh, commercial and industrial charges are lower, um, we recommend using the estimated. Uh, daily and weekly hours of demand and availability of the park system, which results in lower demand. Uh, it's lower expected demand from employees. And then uh regarding accessory dwelling unit fees, because of the change uh to fees based on the number of bedrooms. We recommended having the uh ADU fees be fifty percent of the fee based on the number of bedrooms in the ADU as well. Cause some ADUs may not, maybe larger than just a studio unit. Um, and then also the new fee calculation doesn't include the value of trails, so that's a little bit different as well. Uh, this uh, this slide is showing the current fee structure with the city's twenty twenty-four adopted fee. So the city has a per unit housing fee for single family and multifamily residential property. And a fee per one thousand square feet of commercial and industrial property. And right now ADUs are charged fifty percent of the multifamily fee. And uh, this slide is showing the proposed, the recommended fee structure, which includes different fees based on the number of bedrooms. For residential property, um, so it looks a little bit different. Um, commercial and industrial fees are still based on square feet, um. And accessory dwelling units would be fifty percent of the fee for the number of bedrooms. For example, a one bedroom ADU would be fifty percent of the one bedroom residential fee. Uh, once we've determined what those uh fees would be uh in twenty twenty-five and the um. Housing unit and commercial industrials for employment uh growth targets. Uh, we estimated the revenue that could be collected from park impact fees between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-four would be. Between seven point two and nine point six million dollars, um, so this is based on that projected growth. Um, the calculated fees and um estimated inflationary increases to the fees over this twenty-year period. Uh, actual revenue would depend on the the actual amount of growth and when that would occur and what the fees would be in that particular year. Uh, impact fees can be applied to park system improvements that add capacity to serve growth. Um, and in the uh Parks and Trails Plan and the twenty twenty-five capital. Um, and in the uh, Parks and Trails Plan and the twenty twenty five Capital Facilities Plan, there are about twenty two point five million. Dollars in project costs that are considered um, potentially eligible for the use of impact fees. So um, as it does now, the city could use other funding sources to offset this gap between estimated revenues and project costs. Which could be locally uh, generated revenues or uh, grants. And this chart is showing uh, how Sumner's current and proposed fees compare. To uh, current fees in neighboring jurisdictions. Um, this is showing just the single family residential fee. Um, the proposed four plus bedroom fee for Sumner is at the highest of this group. Also, the two to three bedroom fee is is near the top of the range. Uh, the one bedroom fee is is closer to the median and then the no bedroom fee is a little bit lower. Um, other jurisdictions are going through the same or likely going through the same exercise of uh, adjusting their fees for this. Requirement to have proportionally lower impact fees um, for smaller units and and maybe updating their uh, their rates as well. So that this may look different. Uh, that's the information we wanted to share. Um, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Kenan.
Yeah, thank you, Catherine. I think um, I probably had some questions going into this and you you've helped answer a few of those um, in your slides here. Can uh, can I, I'm trying to understand the the difference in the change in commercial, uh, the effect on commercial properties. Because that was significantly down. I know there, yeah, there was a slide there that saw that go significantly down. And um, so. I think in an earlier slide as well, there was a mention of, you know, commercial uh, are not as likely to use uh, to be one of the visitors of parks, which makes sense. Um, and that, but they would be more likely to use trails, um, whether to, you know, commute to work or. Uh, just have kind of some recreation time on a break or something like that. But um, so maybe this is more of a question for this for city staff is is the. Transportation impact fee or tran- traffic impact fee being adjusted to compensate for that loss in commercial impact fees for parks?
It's, yeah, I can respond to that, Councilmember Kenan. Uh, the transportation impact fee was calculated and it's also been increased. Uh, from previous fee. It was calculated to incorporate non-motorized facilities, which would include trails. And that's partly why this is going down so much because now it doesn't include trails. And then I don't know what percentage it caused uh, the increase for transportation impact fees, but it's definitely. In there now. Trails are now in the transportation impact fee and not the parks.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that that um, so we are losing some revenue in in this column or this item, but that would be found somewhere else. And okay, that answers um. That answers that question. Um, and Catherine, you mentioned uh, briefly on on one of those bullets that there is a state. Requirement or law about um, the smaller unit. Despite having maybe more bedrooms, even if it was maybe smaller square feet, there's kind of an adjustment there. Could you kind of describe that a little bit more?
Sure, um, the state uh, legislation discusses that it needs to be proportionally lower. For a smaller housing unit and it could be on uh, bedrooms. It could be on square feet or for a transportation impact fee. I think it could be a number of trips. We like to to go with the bedroom uh, data rather than the square footage data. Um. Lisa, you may want to help answer this question. Um, partly, I think it was because of the information that we had available. Um, but Lisa, would you have another answer for that?
Uh, yes, I think um, Catherine got it right in terms of the kind of information the city could use to update the fee over time census based information on. Number of bedrooms um, in new units or the permit application forms. Um, it seemed like the bedrooms are a way of identifying capacity to have people. Even if people choose to use those bedrooms differently. It seemed like a more straightforward calculation of potential number of users of the park system uh, using that metric.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, probably last last question maybe for uh, staff. Um, it are are impact fees, park impact fees are those um, regularly reviewed? Like it's, it sounds like we set them in twenty eighteen. Is it? Is it a regular cycle or is it just as needed and as um, the economy and market changes?
Uh, as as I pointed out at the beginning, when we updated the park. Plan, uh, we'd have an opportunity to relook at this. Um, but then our fees are tied to a index uh, for kind of inflationary increase every year. So they do go up every year somewhat. Um, but a kind of a whole rewrite of the, a re- a relook at the rate study, uh, that's something we do less frequently. And e- usually it's going to be tied to a, an update to the Parks and Trail Plans every six years. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I will.
Go ahead.
Short, it's just real short. So have you guys calculated out? So uh, residential, that includes apartments, right?
Right.
So I'm just looking at these fees. I'm not even looking at the commercial because that's square feet. So like one of these apartment complexes, let's just say the one over by the library, what? What sort of money would that bring in? For an apartment building?
It's a great question.
It's just simple math.
He's doing the math. I will say that if you look at the twenty four adopt rates, so the current rate is about three thousand dollars per multifamily unit. When we were looking at um, work that our consultants did, we really, we we took some of the the complexes that are in the the permit pipeline right now. And kind of gut checked and fact checked. Okay, you're assuming this many studio apartments, this many one bedroom, one in two bedrooms. And we made some changes based on what we're seeing in the market where we're seeing more studios and one bedrooms come onto the market than the two, three bedroom apartments. So. We did do some fact checking there. Ryan can give you the. The very.
Yeah.
Very rough math.
Just rough. Some rough math. So the. The a building that's going up across from McLendon's has a hundred and twenty seven, I guess a hundred and twenty seven units. And if you just use the one bedroom calculation, you're four hundred twenty seven thousand in fees. So I know. Four hundred, five hundred thousand in fees for a hundred and twenty seven units is probably. Like like Jason said, a lot more studios, one bedrooms. Uh, there's usually fewer three bedrooms. But the two or three bedroom falls into the same category. So so to give you some idea, half a million for a hundred, hundred.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Ed.
I had two questions. Um, so. Just to make sure I understand. So we didn't do this in twenty twenty four while we broke it up by bedroom. Is that correct?
Correct. It was like single family, multifamily.
Got it. So then the twenty twenty, I'm looking at the this chart here. So twenty twenty four calculated fee. What does that mean? Is that like, because it didn't really get applied during that time? So what do you mean by, what does that mean?
So the, in the study, they have a calculated fee of twenty twenty four and then they bumped it up a little bit for inflation in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
The one that is in the ordinance is the twenty twenty five.
Got it. Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, I didn't get that. And then uh, how does this handle? Um, I mean, how do you define bedroom? I mean, so if somebody builds a room without a closet. Decides, hey, I'm just gonna modify my my floor plans to have. No closets and then does that count as a bedroom or what is that?
Uh, that's a great question.
Three bonus rooms and then no bedrooms and that'd be amazing.
I think they have to have a closet.
But if it doesn't, it's not a bedroom.
Right. And Lisa, do you have an answer to that one or or Stephanie or or Catherine?
Um, Ryan, I I think we were relying on the building code. Um, that's something you could define in your ordinance. Um, just to be clear, because I think if it's got all the elements that the building code would define as a bedroom. Somebody could use it as a den or some other thing, but eventually it could be used as a bedroom. So I think it would be good to specify that.
Thank you, definitely. This is my third question. I said two. Sorry about that. Uh, the other one, I was just curious, um. If somebody, is this meant to, I know that the state law has made some of these adjustments required, but. Is, are we trying to incentivize things in this or is it just really, is is it something we're just using? Because a lot of times we make these these. Fees can be used as either disincentive or incentive for developers. Is there any thought of the fact that we want to incentivize? The no bedroom studios or is it, is it really just, I mean, how are we, is there any thought in that process from from the consultant side? What do you, do you guys put into that?
I guess, um, Catherine, feel free to add, but I believe that this is really just to right size the fee based on potential demand. So it's really that the impact is being um, identified in the fee that's that is paid. And I think the idea of matching fees to sizes of units. Was meant to address that there's a wider range of dwelling types out there. And I think Catherine, you hit on that earlier, that that it's it's meant to kind of put things in balance, I think, and. Make things more transparent.
Yeah, I would agree. I think this is just the calculation based on the same methodology without. Really a policy intent behind it. Um, just to try to, yeah, like Lisa said, to try to right size based on um. Number of people that would be in these different size um, housing units.
I think there was a policy desire of the council to have us staff going to look at what options there would be to incentivize one thing over another. We need to kind of sit down and look at that. That was a lot of that was a desire of the council.
Family. Come to your domain.
Thank you. So that's kind of where uh, my mind was going. So I'm looking at this and I'm thinking if, you know, if I'm a large scale developer, eh, you know. Four hundred K might be in it in the big picture of things. I mean, it's. Five hundred K, but. For maybe the smaller developers, that's what I was wondering because we have a mandate that we have to have X amount of housing in the city. By a certain period of time by the state. I mean, we have to. Um. And then if we look at the graph, you know, Sumner four plus bedroom, we're on the high end. I mean, and even if you look at the two to three bedroom, we're only a couple of lines down. So I'm I'm looking here at the other towns around around us and and what their fees are. And like you said, they're probably doing the same thing we're doing. So is there a a way to offset so that it continues to bring uh, people in or is that not a concern? Developers in is what I'm talking about. Is that not a, uh, we're not concerned with this, uh, people kind of shying away and saying, geez, I'm not gonna go here and build them. I'm gonna go to Auburn or see what I'm saying.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I'll tell you the the development activity that we're seeing, it's primarily studios, one bedrooms or one point five bedrooms, which is a bedroom in a den, the Councilmember Alfred's.
Yeah, yeah.
Which then, you know, you look at, those are one bedroom. The the costs that they're paying in twenty twenty four versus what they'll be paying at the calculated rate versus in the inflation is almost identical. So I don't know that it's going to disincentivize or incentivize.
But but does that help us reach our goal of housing for X amount of people mandated by the state? That's kind of what I was looking at. I mean. If you look at that, then it's one point five people, whatever that means, right, that we can get in here, but we do have a certain number of housing. But does that housing by the state equate to number of residents? Follow what I'm saying there? So if it's number of residents, then I mean, we can't do it, we can't have. However, I can't remember the number of people, but we can't have seventeen thousand one point five bedroom apartments. I mean, somewhere we gotta get in this three plus, four plus range to create housing mandated by the state.
Well, the state, yeah, the state doesn't break it down. It it's a housing unit. They don't break it down.
By number of people.
By number of people. There's a, there's an average household size that. Is used to run the calculations and estimates, but we don't get into, you know, no bedroom, one bedroom.
Okay, but then that's okay because a fear of a lot of residents is we don't have an infrastructure for a gazillion people or the schools being overcrowded. So. Might be good that we're doing one point five bedroom.
And look at it, at an affordability standpoint, which is one of the reasons why the state is mandating growth targets. Arguably, you know, in a studio or one bedroom, we're typically going to be more affordable than a two, three, four bedroom.
Right.
Or apartment.
Okay, thanks. Just trying to figure out. You know, it's not a standalone entity. This isn't, a lot of fingers come into it. So I'm just kind of watching them go in and out. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Councilmember Clarket.
I may be jumping way ahead because I'm already on the fee schedule update on section six. Um, are we headed there? Or are we, this is what we're in?
Yeah, this is it.
Okay, um, it says uh. Residential one bedroom, but I, and up above it says fifty percent. And so I'm not getting the jive. Because it doesn't say one bedroom up on top.
This is.
So it reads better up there.
Uh, the ordinance?
Yeah. Section six, amended section twelve point three point one zero zero fee schedule updates. There's. I'm looking, so up above, section E, it says for ADU. But it doesn't say ADU with no bedroom shall be charged that the bedroom fee and an ADU with two or three bedrooms. Doesn't state a one bedroom in there.
Maybe Catherine can address.
For fifty percent. So I'm, I mean, it could be me, but I'm not reading the one bedroom in there. Yeah, it says it there, but up here it says fifty percent on section.
The intent was to have the ADU, oh, I see.
Yeah, it goes right to two or three. It doesn't have the one in there.
Yeah, that needs to be adjusted. Sorry. It should, you should read that the ADU will be at fifty percent no matter what.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a whole other previous draft that had.
It's a gold star, Councilmember.
Gold star.
Yeah, boy, I'm gonna write this down.
You can never quit now.
Nope.
You're sick of it. All right. Are we good? Any other questions?
So this is coming back to you for consideration next week. Uh, that way it will align with all of our other fee increases that are associated with this type of permits. If we're first correct, right?
All right. Great, good. Thanks. Okay, we are going to move on to two thousand twenty five comprehensive plan annual amendments. Chandra Walker, Associate Planner.
Thank you. So as you noted, I'll be presenting on the twenty twenty five annual amendments. It's. Amendments to our comprehensive plan. And I know you guys had a really huge lift last week in adopting our twenty twenty four comprehensive periodic update. So thank you very much. I'll go over a little differentiation as to why we're looking at annual amendments this year. This slide will provide the code reference that will uh, require us to take a look at. An annual amendment every year, no more than. Um, no, less frequent than every other year, rather. The last time that city opened up a cycle for amendment applications was in twenty twenty three. We didn't receive any applications and we quickly rolled into preparing for that twenty twenty four update. So we're here now to take a look at um, potentially. Uh, map amendments specifically. And I'll go over a little bit about um, what staff's taking a look at. So this slide will show that the city is taking a look primarily at our town center plan. We've identified two areas that we kind of want to take a closer look at. Um, we've got Zender, which is in our West Sumner District. It represents. An edge of the town center plan and I've got some maps to kind of demonstrate it here shortly. And um, a couple of properties along Cherry Avenue and um, Main Street Railroad, Railroad Street. There, that's in our historic district and staff's taking a look at what those minimum height requirements are in that zone. Reducing it to allow um. Redevelopment opportunities and also taking a look at. The current zoning on Cherry Avenue. It's Town Center Five currently, and we're looking at possibly reducing it to Town Center Four. And a city map amendment that we're looking at is um, just north of Zender between Friar and Steel. It has existing heavy industrial zoning M two and we're considering uh, rezoning. Down to light industrial uses in that vicinity. And then within the last year, we've also received two private interests um, for a couple of. Uh, amendments to either, to the comprehensive plan map designated. amendments to either, to the comprehensive plan map designation, as well as our zoning map. So I'll take a closer look at those as well. So on this slide here, I have the town center plan map with the entire boundary here. It's a little small to take a look at. Let me see if I get my pointer going on. Yeah, so we've got our post office located here, the library um within our riverfront district. And uh our historic district and Main Street's located here. I've highlighted here Zender, which has approximately, let me see what I wrote down here, fourteen parcels along Zender. As I mentioned, is zoned um pretty high right now. It's the existing zoning's Town Center Six. So we can imagine six stories could be developed along Zender there. Um, the minimum height to redevelop in that area currently is three stories. So staff's considering reducing that to two stories and taking a look at just reducing that height for a better, transition in uh that vicinity with um the light industrial zone is right across the street there, or heavy, rather. Um, the other location in our town center plan that I mentioned is just these parcels adjacent to the railroad on Cherry Avenue. We've got existing Town Center Five, which means five stories is allowed there as well. Um, we're taking a look at some of our form-based code requirements in the town center plan along Main Street. We allow up to four stories on Main Street. So if you're within thirty feet of Main Street, you've gotta step that height back a bit. So we might take a look at that language and see if we can carry that through to those uh parcels here on uh Main Street, that's zone Town Center Five. So those are those two areas in the town center plan. That city map amendment, as I mentioned, that has our existing heavy industrial uses. Again, I've got our town center plan boundary here, and then highlighted the post office a little largely here. Zender Street and just right across, we're taking a look at just a couple parcels here. This map will end up highlighting just a few of those parcels we're taking a closer look at that would um, be a better fit for light industrial uses. A few of those properties, as we'll take a closer look with planning commission, are vacant properties, our uses have ceased. So uh might be a good opportunity to take a look at rezoning this vicinity. The private interests that we've received within the last year is potentially taking a look at, the urban growth area that's just south of Winco. Believe it's a hundred and sixty-six avenue here. There's about fourteen parcels that exist in our current UGA. And it has a comprehensive plan designation of LDR two, so it's low density residential allowed. The location of these parcels are adjacent to existing commercial zones, as you see Winco's highlighted here. This zoning is considered IC interchange commercial. And then across four ten is our East Sumner area. YMCA is cut off here, but that's our general commercial zone as well. So, if we are able to get approval to open up the amendment cycle, um they, this private application will submit. And they would um let us know if they're looking at higher densities um for comparable commercial zoning in this vicinity, as a comprehensive plan designation. So because they're in our UGA, they could apply for, comprehensive plan map amendment.
And Krishna, if I could just mention on this one, um, they have expressed some interest in annexing into the city, these parcels down here. One of the, the challenges and reasons why they are a little hesitant is they actually have greater densities allowed in the county, land use than they have in cities land use. So right now, they could build higher density than what we would allow today. So, they wanna align those and say, well, we wanna match what the county already gives us the ability to, to develop.
You mean, when you talk about density, are you thinking they wanna do residential?
Yeah. They can already do that.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I was curious, where is Steel Street?
Steel? You wanna go back?
Is that, is that?
Where Central Well is. So like Fleischman G's, Sanoco's.
Street too, and I've got it highlighted here on the screen for you. So Steel, and we've got Pease Avenue on the other side of that lumber.
There's a few houses that go along Steel and the one, they're kind of on the corner there. And then you have Western Wood Preserving, that big warehouse wall.
Okay. And then the other application that we may have interest in, sorry again for not giving you the best orientation, but if you're familiar with the future city public works facility site, um, it is, kind of between, uh, so it's below twenty-fourth street, it's gonna be way up here. We've got a river that's cut off from this little map image. And um, I think it's forty, one forty-second. That runs through um majority of our light industrial zones. There is existing low density residential eight, five. Um, that's, essentially between the river and surrounding M one zone properties and existing warehouse development that kind, that sits here. There is interest in potentially looking at these two parcels. Keeping in mind, the river will retain um a flood zone here. So there, there's a portion within a setback of the river that wouldn't be developable. However, I think the property owners might be interested in rezoning to M one. And we would be looking at having them access this site with thirty-second street here. So, again, the application to be submitted can determine a little bit more details, so. I wanna land on this page for you guys for a little bit.
Jason, do you think you could um kind of explain, what the ask is on these properties?
Sure. You know, what we're asking right now is, you know, our code requires that we do this, this open call to do comprehensive plan amendments every two years, not more than every two years, right? So we can do it every year, but we can't go more than two years. The last time we did this was in twenty twenty-three. So really, we have to do it, but it requires council tonight to say, yes, this sounds good. Go ahead and open up for application. So that's really the ask tonight. And if we, if we get that ask, then we will, notice the public and say, hey, anybody who wants to do a private map amendment or comprehensive plan amendment, can fill out an application, pay a fee, and submit that to the city. In addition to that, the city can do our own map amendments that were requested. Those are the ones that Krishna talked about, the town center as well as,
Zender.
Yeah, M one and M two change up on uh off of, north of Zender. And then the ones that she mentioned that were private, south of Winco, the one on thirty-second, those are ones that people have been asking us, like, hey, when are you going to do this? Cuz we want to do this. So we anticipate that we'll get those. We might get one, two, five more on top of all these. And then we will run through a process with the planning commission. Uh, we'll hold some public hearings, then we'll be back to you for a decision on, do you make these changes or not make these changes?
Thank you. Go ahead, Barbara.
So how much would the fee be for a private owner, for a developer?
The comprehensive plan map amendment application or a comprehensive plan amendment is two thousand six hundred. And then to do a zoning map change is an additional fee, thousand five hundred. So, kind of went over that slide pretty quickly there.
Councilmember Kenna?
Yeah, and I, I uh, I understand the ask today is just uh, you know, kind of moving forward the amendment cycle here, and there's opportunities for, uh, further discussion and the planning commission to um kind of impart their, their, themselves in these. I, I would, I look at that Winco location and um, I, I would be a little bit concerned about the location. I, I, I understand we've got uh targets to meet. We've gotta provide housing. Uh, there's growth in the area, but that, that location is, traffic can already be rough. There's a large grocery store, there's car dealerships, there's the highway there, um, that people are coming off and onto. And so I'm, I'm just imagining if, depending upon the type of density we're looking at, um, there's, there's no walkability to my knowledge or bikeability around that area. So it's really just um, people entering the freeway from that location. So I, I would be a little bit concerned about that. Obviously, we've got many, many steps to go depending upon um any applications we receive, but I just kind of wanted to throw that in discussion there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Two questions. I think one, one of them was on that Winco site, and I was just curious what, it, it seems like if we're gonna move forward and, and kind of allow the, that to be part of the um comprehensive plan amendment, then it would be something that we would wanna do if we were interested in annexing it in. Seems to me that one of the big questions I would have if that came up would be what type of infrastructure? I know it's right next to the city limits, but I, I mean, if you're, and I see, and eventually annexing it in, and it costs millions and millions of dollars to add sidewalks and storm drains and all that stuff. Um, I know some of the developer would, I mean, is that a developer agreement thing that's later on, or is that something that we should think about at this point?
So I wanna make sure we don't get confused of what we're asking here. First off, we don't get to decide whether they apply for a map amendment. They get to decide that and make that, that, that uh application to the city. Once we get that, then we will evaluate it on those merits of their, their request to change that zoning, really to match what they already have in the county. Okay? The annexation is a completely separate discussion, separate from this. And yes, those are things you need to consider when you look at, can we provide them service? What are they going to have to improve as they develop? Like any development, you know, when they, when these multifamily units come in, if the infrastructure isn't there, oftentimes they have to upgrade that infrastructure. And they would be no different.
So in, in the process of talking about this, that would be a discussion during that time, or would, when would that be a discussion?
That's a discussion for when they want to come and annex.
That's, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And then the second question I had was on the um, the city had that one on the, Zender. Well, I'm just curious, we're, we were wanting to rezone from M one to M two, or upzone from M two to M one, more, that's down?
It's down zone.
The down zone, thank you. Okay. And then um, also both those are down zones. Like we're going from three to two stories, and then M two to M one is less. Okay, thank you.
Those are the staff-sponsored uh map amendments. If we are to open the cycle, that's what we would be focused on doing. So thank you, councilmember uh Alfreds, for your clarifying questions. We are looking to just provide a little bit more compatibility of uses in that more central location of town. Um, the town center plan, was adopted in twenty eighteen and will likely need to be updated. So oh, as a result of opening this amendment cycle, we would be taking a look at the town center plan as a whole, making updates and um following this proposed schedule here, where we get your approval to open the cycle. And notice our um application requirements, the fees and everything on our public notice in three different locations. Um, we'd open up that cycle for thirty days with applications due February. And based on the applications we get and refining staff's proposals, we bring that docket to the planning commission. They are gonna be the approving body on if we would move forward with those docket items. I, uh, staff will also present a public participation plan there in March at that docket um presentation meeting. And that public participation plan will just include opportunity for the public to weigh in, uh, especially on any private applications that get submitted. Um, we'll um make that public participation plan um available to you guys as well. And that will jumpstart um our efforts um prior to holding any hearings with the planning commission, um, late summer, and uh come back to you all with final recommendations before the year ends.
Great. So I think I need to give you the answer you're asking for. At least I'm, from my perspective, I, I'm open to opening the cycle, but I think you wanted that from us.
Anybody else? Anybody down here?
Thank you. So we will move forward with opening. And uh, Krishna, make sure you guys know.
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel.
Sounds good. Okay. Are we moving on now? Our, all right, city administrator report.
One short item, just a reminder, next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so we do not have a meeting, but we do have a regular council meeting on Tuesday. At six to five.
Got that, guys? Tuesday. All right. Uh, any agenda issues? Council agenda issues. Any, any issues down on this end? See none. Committees. We're good with committees? All right. And we have no executive session? I will adjourn this meeting at seven.